No, it's green because normally it would be red. Yeah, we're good. All right, everybody, welcome to the Monday, June 3rd meeting of the Board of Trustees for Village of Flower Hill. Let's rise to the pleasure of the audience. I'll have Ms. Marla Wolfson lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God in the midst of all with liberty and justice for all.
That's all right. Might as well continue to stand because we have to do your swearing in. Am I going to read it? Are you reading it back or?
Well, you can read it and I can say.
Oh, that's right. Okay. So we're going to be swearing in Marla Wolfson as our new village administrator. Welcome, Marla. Here is the oath of office. I, Marla Wolfson, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of village administrator of the Village of Flower Hill.
I will. I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. So for those of you who don't know Marla, Marla was most recently at the Village of Rossett Harbor, where she was village clerk treasurer for eight years. And before that, she was the deputy clerk at the Village of Mutton Town for six years. We're very excited. We're excited you stayed for your full first day.
I'm still here.
Before we go to the public hearing, I am going to read a tribute that we wrote for Ronnie. Unfortunately, Ronnie is not here today. And thank you, Mitchell, for helping out with the majority of this. So throughout Flower Hill's history, there have been many dedicated individuals who have proudly and tirelessly kept it running like a well-oiled machine. Individuals who have reminded us that the people make the place and why Flower Hill is such a special place to live, work, and play. Among those individuals is Ronnie Schatzkamer, who served as village administrator for 16 years from September 2008 to right up to the end of May 2024. Throughout her career in Flower Hills, in Flower Hills spanning five mayoral administrations, Schatzkamer constantly carried out her duties with immense pride and utmost care as a firm believer in good governance, ensuring the village government would remain a model for the 532 other incorporated villages across New York State. She successfully aided Flower Hill through countless natural disasters, including hurricanes Irene, Sandy, Isaiah, and Ida, and through the unprecedented operational challenges caused by COVID-19. Schatzkamer also successfully aided the village in securing countless grants and spearheaded and oversaw countless municipal projects, the pinnacle of which has been the digitization and automation of Flower Hill's building department records and its code enforcement systems, streamlining municipal operations and making vital local government services more accessible. Here's a big list. Other significant projects which Schatzkamer helped Flower Hill's government successfully carry out include the village's purchase of Middle Neck Road in 2022 through an AMA with Nassau County, the creation of the pedestrian bicycle path along Stony Town Road, the construction of our village playground basketball courts and sports court, the construction of the community meeting space and village hall, the addition of street parking on Middle Neck Road, and the beautification of many of our traffic islands throughout the village. Also, she was instrumental in lowering the village's speed limit to 25 miles an hour to enhance public safety, the designation of Flower Hill as a Tree City USA, which is this is our 10th year, and restoration and landmarking of the Flower Hill Cemetery. Schatzkamer was a staple of village halls, striving to assist everyone with a constant smile and the impact which her hard, dedicated work has had on the Village of Flower Hill, its peoples, and its government last in perpetuity. So thank you, Ronnie, for everything you've done for the village. I would like to make a motion to go into the public hearing portion of our meeting. Seconded by?
I'll second it.
Deputy Mayor. Jeez, all in favor?
Aye.
First, public hearing is the 2024 North Hempstead Country Club fireworks permit. And I will have our good friend Dan Rogers present to the board ever so quickly the gist of all this.
Congratulations to Ronnie.
Oh, for the record, because this is a public hearing, your name and address for public records.
Uh, my name is Daniel Rogers. My work address is 2914 Washington Boulevard.
Perfect. This is being transcribed.
Yep.
So quickly tell us about the two events.
All right, so June 28th, the easy one, the one that we do every year is our annual 4th of July celebration in June. It's a large party for our membership. We'll have the public viewing area as usual for the local residents. And the rain date would be the next night, Saturday, the 29th.
And if both days rain, that's it?
Yeah.
Okay. Does anybody, on that portion of the presentation, does anybody have any questions from the board? Does anybody have any questions from the public? Good. Now talk about the 22nd.
The 22nd, we have a member who promised his daughter when she was a little girl that she would get married at the club because she wanted to, and there would be fireworks. And so a much smaller program would be launched on Saturday, the 22nd. There is no rain date for that month because we're not going to invite all the guests back for the wedding. It is a five to 10-minute presentation that would still take place about 9:30 just because that's dark.
Right, so both at 9:30?
Both at 9:30.
And obviously, you will notice all the neighbors. Even though they kind of have been noticed, I assume you have all the notices there?
I do.
So as part of the record, you should probably
Yep.
present them to the clerk. How do you intend on notifying the residents of the earlier fireworks so that they're prepared?
Uh, they should have gotten a notice on both.
Okay, so that they are noticed.
Right.
Good.
But it's a surprise, so don't tell anyone. And that's a joke, obviously. But no, the bride, the bride doesn't know, and the wife doesn't know.
Oh.
The mom, the mother, the bride doesn't know either.
Very impressive. So the groom knows, doesn't he?
No, no, just the father and the board members who said, yeah, we're going to get them.
So as part of granting this, does anybody have any questions about this before I speak? Perfect. So it, as part of making the, I guess, motion to approve this, I'd like to, as we've done in the past, waive the fee for the 4th of July fireworks. However, for the, our quote, private fireworks on the 22nd, because it's really of no benefit for the community, I would like to charge the full fee for that permit, which Marla looked up and it's $2,500. And I believe Dan is in agreement for that.
We collected it already.
We did. That's even better. Thanks already for paying, Dan.
I got a feeling.
Okay. That's even better. I don't have that information. All right, so if nobody has any questions from the public or any, and don't worry, David, there'll be a public viewing spot. I will see you there because I usually do.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would just ask in conjunction with presuming the board is granting that there be appropriate indemnification provided to the village and insurance satisfactory to the village insured, which I believe they normally do provide, but I would just suggest that they may apparently grant here.
Thank you.
Yeah, we could grant this under the same terms we granted the 4th of July ones, right?
Correct.
We've done this so many times, I forgot to ask for that stuff.
That's fine.
We use the same company for the reason to make sure that all our i's are dotted and t's are crossed the same way every time.
Okay.
Correct, and that would include, as I'm sure the gentleman knows, this is based on the prior arrangement, it would have to require a term of due diligence, a bond's requirement, all the requirements in line for would be included in this motion for the grant.
And that would be part of this motion. Thank you for pointing.
And finally, for the purposes of CCR, I would just submit that this would either be a type 2 or listed and then would require no further action.
So we need to make, do we need to do two separate resolutions? One to CCR and then the fireworks on it, or can we do a joint?
The CCR would be first, so there's a CCR motion that this should be a type 2 or a motion having our signature in that.
I will make that motion. Do I have a second?
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful, that passes. Now I will make the motion to grant the special exemption permit for fireworks for the two events. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you all very much. Have a great one.
See you next year.
See you next year, see some of your fire.
Possibly. Thanks again, Dan. Public hearing number two. Public hearing number two is our proposed local law D 2024. Amend Chapter 212-1 Tennis and Other Courts Definitions. And I will ask our building superintendent, Peter Albinski, to address the board on this one.
Yeah, so what this does is just expand the definition that Chapter 212 refers to, so other courts, including basketball courts, triple courts, and the like. Where before it just had elevated courts and tennis courts. And that section, 212, only applies in R1 districts in Malibu. So only in an R1 are you permitted to have these tennis courts or other courts under R access needs.
This is pretty much a little bit of just a housekeeping thing. So I don't know if any board members have any questions, but this is our first public hearing, so I don't think we're going to hold this just because we usually do for our second public hearing, even though it is kind of de minimis. But any questions from the board? Gary looks like he has a question.
Well, it's very popular these days to line driveways with sort of a half court, basketball court, so I'm wondering, like, how do we interpret that?
We never had a rule about basketball hoops in driveways. Half the houses in the village have.
Yeah. I mean.
I, I guess what I'm trying to, when does, when does the scale tip to where it's not just a driveway and half court? Is my point, yeah, because, you know, normally it's like, oh, this is where we, this is, you know, the driveway, we're going to put a basketball hoop, or this is where the parking spur is for the basketball.
Yeah, I don't think we regulated that. This, to me, it refers to new playing surfaces created in, you know, like, in the backyard. If somebody, I don't think we want to, if somebody has a portable net that they have the kids play in the driveway, I don't think this, to me, that would deploy as that.
Yeah, I agree. This is for permanent, big old structure. Any questions from the public? That being said, I will make a motion to, I guess, adjourn this to the, possibly the July Board of Trustees meeting. If we don't have any other public hearings, we will hold off on it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Wonderful. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. I will now make a motion to close the public hearing portion of this meeting. Seconded by?
I'll second.
Mr. Lewdowski, all in favor?
Aye.
Now my favorite section, public comment. Anybody from the public would like to speak? Mr. Schwartz?
Do you want me to go now or should it be?
Old business. Mr. Frankel?
Thank you, no.
No? Very disappointed. I always like hearing from the David. Next part of the meeting is let's approve the minutes of the May 6th Board of Trustees regular meeting and the May 22nd special meeting. The reason we had the special meeting was because the paperwork wasn't filed in time to do the public hearing that we just had for the fireworks. So we had a very quick special meeting on the 22nd for the purpose of having the public hearing for fireworks and to do the proposed local law D. So if there's any questions on the meeting minutes, they may speak now. No questions, I will make a motion to approve both meeting minutes. Seconded by? Thank you, Ms. Dorfman. All in favor?
Frank, you want to, okay with the minutes?
I'm fine with the minutes, Mayor.
Next is our treasurer's report. Has everyone had an opportunity to read it over? Does anybody have any questions or comments on the abstract?
Yeah, whose car window did we break?
So that's something I want to bring up. So unfortunately, and very strangely, on one day, we, we, the high we, department, not rich, broke two car windows with the whipper on two separate occasions.
What's the whipper?
The, the, the trimmer.
You know, the edge, or the edge of it?
No, the edge of it. With a little piece of fish wire.
That piece of fish wire breaks a car window?
No, it kicked up two different rocks on two different, it's happened. I had my car once, many years ago, hit by one of that dent in my car. It happens. But strangely enough, in Rich's history here, we've never broken one window. But in one day, they decided to break two car windows.
I guess it happens.
It happens.
I've done it on my bike. When you hit a rock, I hit a rock, you know, with the thin tires.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. Cracked the car window.
So there were two, there were two broken windows. Now, the one for $553, I was okay with that. The one for $1,383.
Yeah, well, Frank, guess what kind of car it was? Porsche? No. Range Rover.
Very good.
Two windows.
And it allegedly, it broke one, but because of one.
I'm surprised it wasn't $20,000.
It was a much older car. Now, I think Jeff can tell us this. Technically, we don't have to pay. According to Ms. Schatzkamer, we are indemnified from making these types of payments. Is that not correct information?
I researched it for you. This was a DPW vehicle that.
It was our equipment.
Right.
Yes.
And our employees.
Yes.
How can we not be responsible?
How can we not be responsible?
Yeah, we should be insured.
I don't know. I think perception becomes a reality. And if you start splitting hairs on stuff like that, and, you know, you're on the cover of Newsday saying the mayor's against paying for the.
White pill officials.
Just not a very positive.
Breaking car windows.
Yeah, not a very positive community.
That's why I'm asking if the board, before we approve those two, are specifically okay with these costs. Okay, I, because it was very extraneous and very odd, it was recommended I bring it up as a separate discussion point. So if no one has any problems with that, I would like to make a motion to approve the audited vouchers for some, total sum $143,282.4 dated May 2024. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now. Yeah. Marla? Yeah, Max? Otherwise, he, he's voting to prove them all except that one. Public Works, Mr. Falconus.
Did you, I don't know, the whole board got a copy of the.
Oh, talk about Elderfields first.
So Elderfields, they are paving that tomorrow. They're going to be closing down the road sometime around 7:30. And they're going to know to paint that whole set, basically wherever that, that trench is over there, they're going to paint it all. They said they'll have it done in one day, so they should.
In the whole road?
Well, basically to wherever that trench is. So it goes all the way from the intersection of Hasson Woods and Elderfields.
Yeah, there's like that black strip.
Pretty much, everything from there, they're going from crk to crk. There fits in the whole thing.
Oh, okay.
And they're going to scow, I think, about 200, 300 feet before birch, birch line. So that's going to be hopefully done tomorrow.
We sent out a code red, so we notified all the affected residents and the Pratt Brothers Paving Company hand-delivered letters to everybody's homes, so.
And they've worked here before, they've done some work here years ago, so they know, you know, they know our standards and everything, so. They've been pretty good in communication as well, so.
Now, you want to talk about the planting program?
I know last month we talked about, we kind of gave an idea to to the residents when we're doing high interest shops to any of our 24, 25 traffic islands over there. Me and the village arborist and Frankel, we worked pretty much to every island. And with her knowledge, she basically came up with a list of stuff that's low maintenance. Obviously, we can have some color and as well, you know, not so high, you know, things to grow like that we've hunted in the past, so. You know, we do have the list, just had to finish up a couple of things. Is it attached to your?
Yeah, so it's the last page.
And, yeah, we'll probably send it out. We got the news, whatever. Should be going out soon. And we'll see what happens.
Right. So I'd like to thank our arborist for making the list, making it short and sweet, so it's not a very long list where people can possibly buy anything.
Certainly. Rich, are the islands across from St. Francis Hospital ours or are they theirs?
That's ours. We're going to be taking care of those next Tuesday. But those are tough because I've got to basically close down that whole section, like, roadblocks, I've got to close everything there and then, you know, our payloader and basically take all the stuff out.
But, yeah, like, completely work it out? And will that be some, even if you plant a pachysandra, it would look better than?
Both of those islands there are going to be completely wiped out.
Wiped out and then?
And then we're going to be.
But nothing fancy, right? Because it's so hard.
We, we tried that two years ago. We did plant some nice stuff originally in that first.
But there's no water?
No, without that trucks and cars kept running the road. They killed all our, pretty much our two lots.
Right, target.
So how are you going to shut it down? Where are you going to park? I'll be watching, of course.
Well, we usually shut.
I stopped, I yelled at the guys the other day.
We usually, we usually shut down that last little top.
The little right turn?
Yeah, we shut down, we put a truck there, we close that, and then we close down beside that last strip of, right before that shit comes up. We, we put the arrow board there and let it go either towards the right or the left, go around, and we'll shut that down. You know, it's tough. It's only me and three guys, so I got to figure out. Basically, I got two guys, I lose two guys to basically use the truck.
Because the other morning, I'm in Hasson Woods Road and Stony Town, I saw that the truck was pulled over to the side, but no flashes, nothing wrong.
We had an emergency. I was with them. We were inside cutting that, that tree that we had kind of down, and then we just started.
Yeah, it was just the little, little hazard lights.
Yeah.
Why don't we get a roof, roof lights?
On a new truck, we're getting.
We've been talking, I've been talking about this for how many years now?
We bought you an arrowboard. That's all you get.
The arrowboard I can't put up in that.
It's the.
No, that's, that's good for Paul Washington Boulevard, but for sidewalk, they should have flat, more flashing lights. They have to be more visible.
Pickup truck will have that, and our other pickup trucks getting repaired at Ford, that's one also has the, it has the flashing arrowboard as well.
Yeah, because guys have to be safe. You know what? They can't, we can't take chances for a light rack that costs a couple hundred bucks. Yeah?
Okey dokey.
All right, thank you, Rich, for that report. There was no ARC, so we will not have an ARC report. Administrator's report, Marla, you want to give us a full update on your full, full first day at work?
So the two people on that team, the sign ordinance, that's it.
Bye, David. Jeff, do we have a zoning report?
We don't, but more than that, no actions, particularly in cases where carry over.
Okay, that's easy. Mayor's report, all right, I got a couple of things. Number one, everyone should have gotten their tax bills by now. You have until, is it July 1st? July 1st to pay your taxes. Thank you, which is what percent for the first month?
5% for the first month.
And each subsequent month is?
1% additional.
Which is mandated by the?
New York State.
So we can't change that, so pay your taxes or talk to the governor. Our commercial leaf blower ban will start very soon on June 15th. I know Deputy Mayor Janice will be very happy about that.
I don't care if it's not. So, so you can, you can't have blowers, but you can have a excavator digging a giant hole in the ground for a foundation on a Saturday, but you can't have a leaf blower.
So we, so we did talk about this recently. If that's something you think is, the public would be in favor of?
How do, how do the other villages, Peter, deal with Saturday? I know some don't allow it at all.
Yeah, other villages I work in, nothing on a weekend.
Yeah, I know Brookville's adding.
Landscaping or construction.
It seemed to be the only one that lets, once you talked about it.
Is that, is that all or just commercial?
Exeter.
Well, there's, there's usually an exception for you doing it yourself, yeah.
What about inside? It's, it's inside the house.
Well, inside, no, because, I mean, the base, the basis of that ordinance is for noise. So if I, I will tell people, if you're going to work, you can work inside. Don't put compressors outside. Don't have radios going. If it's inside work and you can't hear it, I mean, that, that's the intent of, no work on, on the weekends. It's quiet in the neighborhood.
I mean, I understand the downside, that things will take a little bit longer because you're losing one day, a week of, of work. But the other thing is, you know, this, this, the summer is very short. You know, it's very few weekends in the summer that you really can enjoy your property. And when they're building a house behind you on a Saturday and all you hear is like, you know.
Framing voices.
You know, framing, yeah, which is actually better than the old days where it was the hammers, but actually I used to like the hammers because it was kind of a comforting sound. I think it's something we've got to look at. And I don't understand why we seem to be one of the few villages that allows heavy construction on a weekend in the summer.
You know you have my support.
So how do we?
Yeah, you are, you are one of the very few that allows.
No, I know, I know.
So since that's.
We're in this business. We know, like, that you can't, I mean, the town will have that. You know, it's very strict with weekend work and, I, you know.
So does anybody have an opinion pro or against us drafting a local law for consideration? I would look towards this end of the table. Because Gary probably has something to say.
Well, how are we, how are we enforcing the Sunday?
We have, we have.
Randall, I drive around and yell at people.
And, and we have, we have our code enforcer, who does work on some Sundays. We have compliance.
So is he, is he doing something on Saturdays?
Oh, he's, he's definitely around for Saturday landscaping, which quite a few of our landscapers, and it's very clear on the permit application, tend not to adhere to. And they're addressed rather quickly.
Because I think, obviously, enforcement is key, right? On this kind of thing.
Right. And that's, that's.
And I guess education too. I mean, I think, I think some, some residents don't even understand that. You can't do anything on a Sunday.
It's rare that I see commercial work on Sunday. The Sunday work you might see is residential, some is mowing your lawn or power washing or washing the cars or whatever with some machinery. But it's very rare that there's any commercial work on Sundays. Any questions on this side of the table?
I just have a thought, though.
Yes, sir.
If, if you were considering changing, changing it so that, let's say, construction couldn't be on a Saturday, I was just thinking if a contractor is, is working now or has a permit now, they may have figured their time frame includes that Saturday.
Absolutely.
So it may be, in other words, if you're going to, if you're going to consider the change, there would be new permits after that.
Yeah, because they're going to, you know, contractors already have their thing, you know, bought out and, you know, scheduled.
And just like we have with the landscaping permit process, there is a relief valve if there is some landscaping that needs to happen on a Saturday. They can appeal to the village administrator who has, in certain circumstances, allowed it. They're having a party or something happened on a Friday where work couldn't get done.
Yeah, storm on Friday.
So in the case of construction, if the builder started to do some work, needs to close up the house on Friday, they couldn't do it because of a storm, I would be okay if, on a case-by-case basis, we would approve Saturday work for emergency-type purposes, so, yes, we, we would have
Right, so that, yeah, that typically is written in most of the ordinance, is that they have that, that provision.
And that's what we did with the landscaping law, so I, I, we would probably mirror it for this as well. All right, so that being said, um, I guess I'll work with Marla on starting to draft something for presentation at the next Board of Trustees meeting.
Assuming we can just steal one from another.
So we don't have to steal. E code three sixty gives you access to all villages' work and we, and, and
Just copy.
Nikon, Nikon tends to have some draft laws that we can use.
Models. So this probably won't even take effect this summer, right, Jeff? Because we have, we'd have
I would use that.
Three months, we'd have three public hearings, right?
Well, that's the basic policy, if it's not required, the village could act sooner. You would need to have a public hearing. So if there's a resolution to introduce this for a public hearing for next month, and it's drafted and it's before the board members have the records in period ahead of time, it could be before the board to consider next month.
I think July is sort of, I think a lot of people might be away, July, if we only do one month and you make it the month of July, maybe not get the most
I have no interest in moving this through quickly. It's, it's not an emergency, we've left so many
It's already, it's already effectively
So let's, let's
Yeah, this is a summer shock.
Let's introduce it at the July Board of Trustees meeting, we'll have the first public hearing, you know, August, we'll vote on it in September, it'll be in effect for next
And the reality is, it's still September, October, it's still nice, it's still nice weather and you still wanna use your tech, so even if it takes effect in September, October, that's fine, and then next year
And I want to give the public, uh, plenty of time to opine on this.
I don't think you gain a lot of pushback.
No, I don't think
Oh, nice. Most people, I don't think people could come out and go, you know, I really like the sound of the structure.
Yeah, I, I think more people would be in support of it than, you know.
On the grid, there's no pushback from us.
Yeah. Frank, like you said, the only, the only advantage to that is that a project gets finished sooner. So the disturbed, the timeframe is shortened by that extra, yeah, that extra day, but I think the weekends should be, you know, special for people.
Okay, let me finish.
Birthday parties, yeah, barbecues, yeah, and all yours.
Well, you already lived through it all last year, so it shouldn't be a problem for you.
Yeah, it was right, yeah.
You did very well. Um, let's go through the rest of this. Interestingly enough, right by Frank's house, what animal was spotted by your house last, two weeks ago?
Fox.
No, better.
Dinosaur.
Coyote.
Coyote.
Coyotes, I have the picture of the coyote, a coyote was found, was walking through the neighbors, right by your house's backyard. I know you're very excited about that. I think
My, my bats are all gone. I don't have any of my bats.
I haven't seen the bats, but I do have deer by my house. The deer have made it to my house.
Sitting in the pool in my
And they made it to Max's house, yes.
I used to sit at home by my pool with the light on in the pool and the bats swooped down over the pool like at a hundred miles an hour, unbelievable.
Right.
And I was just watching and they come right by you, damn. I haven't seen a single bat this time.
I have interesting information.
It's bad, because bats are very good for the environment, they really
And they eat all the damn mosquitoes.
Yeah, they eat all the bad bugs.
I have interesting information on the stop sign camera situation. There, I don't know where we are right now, but there is a joint bill from the State Assembly and the Senate side to, um, approve a pilot program to do stop sign cameras, and Flower Hill was named as one of the, uh, pilot sites, or pilot villages. Um, I don't know where we are right now in that approval process, and I know the state, when did they shut down? You know the state very well, probably.
The bill would have to be passed by tomorrow at midnight.
So hopefully by tomorrow by midnight, we find out. I, I don't know. I heard there was a lot of support to have this as a, a test through a bunch of villages throughout Long Island. And that would be good news, because I think a stop sign camera program would hopefully slow down the people who don't really believe in the word S T L P. Um, Kitty Apple Run is next week. Mary Jo, are you running it this year?
Uh, no, I'll be on my way to the, um, New York State Tax Collectors Conference.
Ooh, that sounds like a real barn burner. So June ninth, I will not be running, but I should be
Tax people get wild when they
They probably do.
They go away for the weekend.
It's a five K, I'll put
Like, three, three days.
I'll put the information in the newsletter. Um, other things of interest are, I think that's about it, I don't have much other exciting June has been a nice quiet month. Um, now I will go to trustee reports, if any trustee has a report. I hear nothing. I will now go to old business. Now, Mitchell, you may speak, since it is old business.
So last month, in every call I brought up, um, hopefully landmarking the Flower Hill Cemetery of the National Preparatory. Where you, you have requested that I look into some more information as to whether there would be any expenditures on the farthest village.
Correct.
I am happy to report to all of that, there would be none. And we do not need a, we do not need a property survey, a copy of the tax map page will suffice, and an amateur sketch that you or I could do in five minutes, and also the coordinates and aerial from R G I S.
Right, and we have the J S, that's very easy to get that data from. So, thank you. If anybody has any further questions from last week's month?
Is there any verbal, um, description that needs to go into that or not?
Yeah, the application has the se, has the sections where you write a little bit out. And if need be, we can ask for some assistance from one of the local landmarks aside, which, as a village, so I'd probably recommend doing anyway.
Right.
Because they're very well versed in this stuff. Um, you, just let me know if you want me to reach out to Cal Mac or Rob, and sure, it can help a little bit.
So before anything's submitted, it should go through Marla, probably for submission, and her and I will proof everything to make sure everything's legit. But thank you for doing the research, I appreciate it.
Do you want me to start the process?
Oh, I would think so, yes. No, no, most certainly, I, yes.
And would you like me to reach out to the local, local authorities as well?
If that will help you with what you need to do, then certainly. That's implied.
Thank you all very much.
Excellent. Um, do I have any new business? I don't think we have any new business. Um, okay, I am going to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss.
Uh, this will be personnel matter and potential contract agreement.
Okay. Do I have a second to go into executive session?
I'll second.
All in favor? All right, nobody objects. Rich, if you want to kill the camera, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Thank you, Peter. See, I got you up.